Pledge of Allegiance, first. Thank you, sir. Welcome to the April 10, 2020 Board of Commissioners Special Meeting. Please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. If you'd like to speak on any item, we do have a speaker request form. Please grab one in the back of the bookcase there. And you could speak on any item today if you're in the public. And then Holly Hennies will take those speaker request forms. And that's Ms. Holly at the left of the dials. Next, we'll have a moment of silent reflection, and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Kevin Copley. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, we'll have the review and approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Ross Connect, second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We got your roll call.
Home couple.
Bring it up. DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Head cock. Aye. Thank you, Chair. Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Just a suggestion, you're really going to have to be close to those microphones for me to hear you.
So what is...
How's this?
Super.
So you guys pull your mics up.
Hello.
Can you hear everybody now?
Can you hear me, Gary?
DeSanto?
Yep, again.
Okay. So item five is COVID-19 update. Director Dustin Willett.
Good morning, Chair. Commissioners Dustin Willett, Director of Emergency Management for Rapp City in Pennington County. So, you know, we continue to effort our reports and everything else that we're doing in the EOC. This morning is our weekly Senior Leader Brief. That went all, that went out 10 minutes ago, so everybody should have that in their inbox. It'll capture trends and numbers over the previous week, and then anything of note that is still pertinent to your situational awareness in regards to supporting the decisions that you're asked to make. So just briefly, there's, we're still working really, really hard on, and there's a big long name for it, but basically a medical diversion shelter for sick homeless. That's, that's taking a majority of our time right now. As you can imagine, there's a lot of moving parts to that. But we continue to work on that pretty much all day, every day, to try to effort a solution in addition to the other things that we're doing. Did get a bit of good information from SISA, which used to be, you know, it's the counterpart to FEMA under DHS that looks at infrastructure, critical infrastructure, and private, private business, some of that kind of stuff. And they looked pretty hard over the last two months at supply chain. Now granted, this is nationwide, not necessarily Pennington County specific, but nationwide, when they looked at, at supply chain, specifically at like paper products, cleaning products, and then the other thing they looked at, I should have written it down before I came. Anyway, some of the concerns we have on supply chain, they looked at pretty hard over the last two months, and the conclusion was there's not a supply problem. There's, like we all have maybe assumed, but they finally put numbers behind, there's not necessarily a decrease in supply, it's just an extreme demand. So whatever is causing that extreme demand, whatever psychology or buying patterns are behind that, it's not that there's less available, it's just that people are buying more. And so we all kind of thought that or made some assumptions along those lines, but there's actually some data now that, that supports that, that, that position. So as people start buying less, those products should become more available. We've been sourcing different, more and more medical PPE is becoming available. Oh, you bet. Is becoming available through some different suppliers. So again, not to paint a rosy picture, it's a, it's a, it's a significant situation all across the country. But again, as South Dakota is starting to see more cases, there's the potential for other places in the, in the country to start their, their downward trend. And if you think about that in the same breadth of thinking about all these manufacturers that are spinning up their production, we could find ourselves in a situation where people are making a, a lot of medical PPE, and a lot of medical PPE could potentially be in the market by the time we, we could potentially really need it. So can't bank on that, can't guarantee that, but it's certainly something to, to keep in the back of your mind. Is there anything specific that I could answer? Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
Dustin. I really like the fact that we have low numbers in Pennington County, but I've also heard that the tests that we do here take a long time to get results back, and, and that we don't do that many tests, and that's why we've got low numbers. Can you expand on that any?
So the test, most of the tests, again, there's not one way of doing tests. Every, every doctor in town, every, every person that runs tests is not doing it exactly the same way. So Monument is, is our largest healthcare provider in our community. Their tests, all of Monument's tests are being sent to Mayo right now, and I think the turnaround on that is somewhere between anywhere from 24 to 72 hours. So one, one to three days for the turnaround on those tests to Mayo. Other providers are still sending tests into the state lab sometimes, and certainly there are tests going to, to private labs outside of the state as well. So there's no one testing or system or repository for all that. It's, it's all different, it's all piecemeal. And the challenging thing with that question is, we don't, the, the information of how many tests have been run specific to Pennington County, if those numbers exist somewhere, they're, they're not being shared. So we don't have a hard number of this, you know, X number of tests have happened in Pennington County. All we have been told, and, and there's no reason necessarily to doubt the information, all we have been told is that the testing is equitable across the state. So if you look at that total number from the Department of Health, what are we up to, 6,000 tests? I, I, I don't necessarily look at that number hard, but about 6,000 tests that have been run, and, and what the Health Department has said is that those tests are spread equitably across the state. So it's not that East River is testing more than West River. If you basically look at population, the, the testing is pretty much the same based on population across the state, and that's all we've gotten from the Department of Health.
Last question would be, where's the temporary shelter being put up at?
So the one that we are working on is Rushmore Hall. So we're not, again, we're hoping to have that, there's still some, some significant logistical pieces to, to work out on that, but the, the place that we are working on trying to stand one on is Rushmore Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair. Commissioner DeSanto.
Basically, to the same thought process with the homeless, even though we get a shelter built for the homeless, they don't necess, they can't be forced to go there, is that correct? They, we can ask them to go there, but we may have quite a few that won't.
So one of the things we're working on, yep, yep. So compliance is a, is a tough thing, and, and that is one of the pieces we're working through on, on how do we handle compliance versus non-compliance? What are the legal mandates? And obviously, we're not going to be, you know, it's, it's not our intent to handcuff people to beds or lock doors, or, I mean, that's, that just can't be what it is. So one of the common themes through this is we can help those who allow us to help them. So that means that there is always going to be a segment of that population that we can't effectively help because they won't let us. And so our, just like medical triage, our intent is to do the most good we can for the most people in the community with the resources that we have. And that means that there are some that, that, that won't avail themselves of what we're trying to do, and, and will, will concentrate on doing the best we can for the most that we can.
And Dustin, I understand that EM is attempting anyway to put some educational material out there for the homeless so that they're not sharing drinks and sharing cigarettes and sharing things that could pass this between one another.
Yep, yep. That's certainly part of our messaging. We, we tend to amplify a lot of official messages, and that's one specifically that, that the Commission asked we take a look at, and we, we certainly designed and distributed some materials that, that had specifically that message.
Very good. Thank you, Dustin.
So what about the testing and the, if you think any of the homeless population have symptoms, can you then quarantine them in the Rushmore Hall?
So again, quarantine is a word that has a lot of connotations to it. We can't force them. Well, there are some mechanisms in law that would allow that, not at, at our authority level, but through the state. The state has not indicated that, that one, they're willing to leverage those laws, and two, logistically, we're not set up to force people to stay. That's not, that's, right now, that's not a logistical option for what we're trying to do there.
So if someone tests positive that's homeless, we just let them walk around?
In some cases, that might be the case.
Wow.
We'll see how that plays out. We're not there yet, but we, we don't know how that looks yet.
I want to chime in too.
You bet.
Madam Chair, if I may, Kevin Tone, Penney County Sheriff. Our Sheriff's Association have been having this discussion on a statewide basis, and earlier this week, there was a case in Eastern South Dakota where the Department of Health did intervene, and there's a process where you can get a warrant for somebody if they don't comply. Now, the problem is, it's a, it's a class one misdemeanor. So it gives you some teeth, but how that works in the system, and I'll let the state attorney, you know, address that. But if, if our homeless population, maybe there's a way where, I mean, if the judge doesn't set a bond, we can use that as a leverage to, you know, keep them in that facility as opposed to the jail. So there's just a lot of tricks and traps, and we're working through some of it, but we're trying to figure out a way to leverage that so we can keep somebody from walking around that is either symptomatic or test positive, but it's going to be a challenge, no question.
Heard my name.
Madam Chair, Mark Vargo, Pennington County State's Attorney. Sheriff's absolutely right. Once we have some kind of criminal charge, at least with the cooperation of our judges, we can release them with a condition that they abide by certain conditions. And if those conditions are being in a particular spot where they can be more effectively quarantined, then if they leave that spot, they'd be subject to rearrest. So there are some mechanisms, but from our standpoint, they don't really kick in until we have that first criminal charge, which might require the state action in some cases.
Okay. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I may, just one other alternative we've offered to the other sheriffs, and we use this routinely, is electronic monitoring. So this particular case, East River, the person wasn't homeless, they were just non-compliant. So in those cases, you could use electronic monitoring to also augment what you're trying to do in terms of monitoring the compliance of that individual. So I think you might see that being used as a tool as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Sheriff, thank you for your, your guys' input, and Dustin for this, because I think this is on the minds of a lot of the people in our community, and, and it's good to know that there was things to, looking at to help the homeless and, and trying to incentivize them and help in a way for them to stay, and we're going to have problems with them. I mean, when you're dealing with mental illness and chronic alcoholism and those types of things, you know, their self-awareness and protections aren't as high as, as normal people when they're in those conditions. So I think, I think you guys are on the right step, and hopefully we can find some ways, it's going to be live and learn. Who, you're going to know who you're, who, who the trouble people are, you already know already. So I mean, we can find ways to, to be able to get to that point to house them if needed and so forth. I think we, I think working together, we can come close.
As evidenced by the, the conversation, this is dynamic. We're, we're figuring out new pieces every day. The one thing we don't want to do is not do anything because we're still trying to figure out all of the details. So it would be reasonable to expect that we get something up and running, doing the best we can with what we have, and then that operation can certainly tweak and change as, as the situation evolves, as different pieces come into play, as we figure out how to do different things. So it's not like whatever we come up with immediately is set in stone, and that's the way it's going to operate for the duration. So yes, being flexible, being adaptable, and leveraging the tools that we can leverage to best serve the community is what we're all about.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Have we considered doing anything with the LaCrosse Street facility that's currently sitting empty?
Certainly been in discussion. That was one of the facilities that, that we've looked at. Right now, the, there are alternate care sites across the community that have been assessed by the Army Corps of Engineer, by a, a local team that specializes in evaluating alternative care sites. And for a number of reasons, with the other sites that we've had available, we, we are keeping the LaCrosse Street facility in our back pocket, but it's not one of the primary ones that we're looking at right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Does anybody in the audience have any questions today for Dustin? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dustin. Items from Human Resources, John Morrell, on proposed remote work policy. Today on, we're going to have and discuss at the end of this meeting about having a work session next Friday, and then having a Commission meeting at, like, the work session will be at nine, and then the board meeting would be at one. And we're going to bring forth, instead of voting today on the, let's see, the furloughs, the necessary county functions, meaning exempt, non-exempt, meaning they're calling them emergency responders, healthcare providers, they're not using exempt, non-essential, essential words. And this today, I think there needs to be more discussion on these three items, so the board understands the point of view from other departments and Johns, and then Gary has information as well. So these will be not areas that will be taking motions today, we'll just have discussion. So John, if you want to start with proposed remote work policy?
That. Good morning, Commissioners, John Morrell, Pennington County Human Resources. So the remote work policy, actually, that is being made available at this time because of the situation that we're in, but this would be a policy that would be applicable at any other time. We've been talking about this for a year or so, anyway, developing some type of a remote work policy. So this actually brings some structure to what that would look like. It gives all the information as to what the policy would actually entail. It outlines eligibility, process, equipment, security, safety, all those types of things, as well as has a form that the department and the employee would complete together then to actually determine what that remote work agreement would necessarily have to be. So by that, I mean this. Remote work doesn't have to be a full-time setting. It can be something that's done a partial day setting. It could be, what it allows for is a non-traditional work schedule, so a flex schedule, if you will, of some type for the employee as well as for the department. That flexibility not only helps in situations like we have today, but it helps in a broader manner, because if you actually have that, it's a, it's something that job applicants seek when they're looking for employment. So while we're talking about it under the COVID-19 situation, it's actually broader and has a much more purposeful use than just our current situation. This would be something, again, while we're putting it in place now, or that's the goal, it would be something that could be retained and/or changed as needed to be more broadly used throughout the county moving forward. So the information you have there today outlines what the process looks like. It specifically speaks to some of those pieces that need to be reviewed. Again, what's the process, what's the, the purpose, eligibility, that it's not every person would necessarily be eligible to use the work from home or the telework piece, and then also the tax and legal implications, who provides what types of equipment, how much is provided by the county, what's provided by the employee, as well as safety, and then how they would actually record their time. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Just one question. Didn't we approve a telecommunication policy?
No. So Madam Chair, we've...
This replaced it?
We haven't actually approved. We discussed it in a few meetings, but we haven't had any kind of an approval process for that. The change to remote work from telecommuting was based upon some of the job titles we have in the county. We actually have telecommunications that work in our dispatch center. That was somewhat confusing as we looked at a telecommuting policy. It didn't necessarily apply to them in that same sense. So remote work is the, just a different definition of the policy.
Okay. That's, that's kind of why, John, I'm not trying to delay what you're doing, but, so we make sure we get the terminology, we talk to, and you guys been having, you and Holly have been having department head meetings, and we've had lots of discussions. So we're making sure before we make any policies that it works for our departments. So that's why we're kind of looking and you're seeing changes, probably every couple days sometimes, every week, because of COVID-19 and, and some of the policies that we haven't set forth at this time. So we're not trying to confuse people in the departments, we're trying to figure out what's the best solution for everyone in our department. So Gary, did you have some information you wanted to share today?
Yes, and let me just point out that I'm having a very difficult time of hearing. I think it probably has something to do with all the microphones that are on at the same time there. In fact, the only thing I heard John say is, that's all I have, I'm open for questions. So not exactly sure what, what John had to say, but I will, I, I have given hard copies to each of the Commissioners. I hope you have them, in addition to John. I did reach out to our employment hotline, which is provided through our liability carrier, the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. Lisa Marso is contracted to work on employee issues for the members of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. She is affiliated with a law firm in Sioux Falls, and her area of expertise for numerous years has been employment issues. And I asked if she had worked on or developed a policy for telecommuting. I wanted to make sure we had language that was supported by our liability carrier, but was also providing what I believe is the necessary balance between county government as the employer and the employee. With the hard copies for your review, she did provide me with one addition this morning on domestic care that also should be considered as part of this telecommuting agreement. I've added that as one A on my hard copy document. I don't think, and I, and I think I heard the Chair say this, that this isn't something that needs to be adopted today. I think we've got, we need to rework and, and put it on our next meeting agenda for further consideration. You know, I do believe that employees are doing us a service by telecommunicating. I want them to know we appreciate their willingness to continue performing their duties during this time. Policies are always subject to change, and if we discover areas that need to be adjusted, we can do that as time moves forward. What I'm trying to do is to present what I believe is a very understandable document that points out responsibilities of each party without too extensive of detail. Be happy to answer any questions in regard to the document I provided you.
So Gary, could you read the domestic care, what that means, so some of the departments kind of know what you're thinking on that?
Yeah, the domestic care, if, if I heard what you said, Madam Chair, I think you asked me if I'd read that.
Yes, sir.
The, it's basically one paragraph long, just entitled, "Domestic Care." The wording on that, it says, "The employee agrees that family care demands shall not compete with the work hours established between the employee and the supervisor except in the case of an emergency. Remote work will not be a substitute for childcare, elder care, or other dependent care. Similarly, pets and other distractions may not impede the employee's ability to effectively perform job duties."
Thank you. Commissioner, do we have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
John, in this process, would this be strictly voluntary, or would it be mandatory in some cases? And could it, could it eventually be long-term after the virus is gone? Could we say, hey, we like this and it works, and, and we could do this on a full-time basis in some circumstances?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Yes. Commissioner, yes. So there's a, there's a number of benefits to this process. First, again, it outlines what the structure should be, it outlines the responsibilities of both parties. It is actually seen as an advantage, and it's not something that's available to all employees. So again, you have to take into consideration their performance, you have to take into consideration their understanding of what the job is. You also have some additional responsibilities of the departments or offices to also remain in contact with those people on a regular basis. So it's an advantage, it's not something necessarily that is forced upon anyone. At the point we do that, it changes the, the arrangement. This is done right now to allow them to still be available for work, and also to help us aid them as far as the social distancing that keeps them employed, provides benefits and service for the county as well. So as far as the other part of the question, if I understood, could this be used moving, yes, long-term? This process is one that we've been working on or talking about for an extended period. The fact that this has kind of kick-started us in getting that on paper is one of the benefits, I guess, of the current environment. But it's seen as an advantage, it's not seen as a right by the employees, not everybody will qualify for telework, nor should they, based upon the types of duties that they have, or their level of work performance as you look at that.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Commissioner LaCroy.
Mr. Drews, I appreciate your, your work in investigating the more of the backside of this. I think in light of this, you know, we have been talking about this and had the departments see who can and can't, and working on teleconferences, Zoom, as Gary's learning the ups and downs of that right now as far as Commission meetings, I think we're going to learn a lot from it. There's some advantages and some disadvantages. What I like so far about this proposal is that it's putting some structure into it of what we need to follow, and so we can later on, once everything's calmed down, if we do have certain type of situations, we can revisit it and look at, is it going to work good for the county in different ways? And we, I think we can rework it, and, but I think the structure's good. You know, I mean, I read through it, and there's a lot of detail, and I think that's what a lot of the people need to know if they're going to be at home wanting to do this. And the people that can't do it, they can look up and say, this is something required. So I think the structure's good, and I, I think we're going to end up seeing more stuff we're going to work on probably in the following year, if not later on this year.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could. So thank you, Commissioner. To, just for reference, I guess, this stack is all samples of other government entities that have these processes. Those were used to actually develop the one that was proposed for us. It's a basically template, it's very similar to the one that Commissioner Drews got from our attorney in Sioux Falls. So there's a combination, but they all did come from government entities. So that, that was used actually as a basis for the one that we proposed here today.
So John, I had asked Gary, and, and maybe if Jay could help, when we bring some of this forward, maybe we could go through you three as a team. So we're basically lawyering up, we have a, Gary's actually in insurance.
Sure.
And then our HR. That way, when we come back, we have, instead of you having to do all this, which is a lot of work, and it is your job in one sense, but it's nice to hear some other people's side, like the insurance side, and then making sure that we're doing this legally, that we kind of team up on some of this to figure out the best policy for Pennington County.
I agree.
So in the future, I'll have you work with Gary and Jay, and then maybe we can figure out that, that best practices for Pennington County. But John, you've been doing a lot of work for us, we appreciate you a lot, and you know that. You keep changing, or not you personally, but your job description keeps changing every other day with trying to figure out policies and different things for us, and then the next day you have to change, or two days later or a week, there's a whole new policy because this isn't going to work. So you've been working your tail off for us, and we appreciate you, John.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I will say, so again, Commissioner Ross Connect, you mentioned this, none of these are going to be written in a manner, and I think that's going to be true for most of our policies this year. There's going to be changes, there's going to need to be changes to some of those, just to pay, it's going to depend on how the, the current situation evolves. So you're going to have this pretty much an ongoing process of review. So I guess that would be my... that would be my, my ask for everyone in the county, employees alike, to understand that while we might have something today, it could be different by Monday or Friday. Those things are going to continually evolve. And then our role too is making sure we're communicating all that information out as quickly as we can, so.
And I, and I think with Jay, keeping track of some things on the side that comes in through, you know, liabilities in different areas, and same with Gary, I think that's going to be helpful for you to keep ahead of the game instead of having you have to do it all. So, that's going to be helpful. At this time, you're, I know, pretty much your generalist is working remote and then you have you. So, a lot of different HRs have more people helping them. So, I appreciate your work, John.
Thank you.
So, that'd be one of the discussions on, if we have our meeting on Friday, that we'll be discussing again. Number seven is the, any other ideas related to COVID-19? And first, we have Barry Tice.
We didn't want to go through the rest of these then, ma'am?
No, we'll have him, then Sidney, then me, then you again, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Barry Tice, the Director of Health and Human Services, and Chair Haddcock requested that I come up and give you a brief update on the economic assistance being provided through our office and some of the details included with that. So, I'll keep my comments as brief as possible without the use of a PowerPoint.
Gary, can you hear Barry? Or does he need to be closer? Can you, Gary?
I, I cannot hear him. I can see him standing there, but I can't hear him.
Is this better?
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you, Barry.
HHS, like many other agencies, has been working with a number of community partners, as well as our partners out of San Antonio and Billings to discuss the economic assistance piece, which impacts us as a county director, and many of our other counties. HHS has always been the primary referral source for housing assistance in Pennington County. And so, it seemed logical for us to continue this process and kind of become the clearinghouse within our county for other nonprofits. And so, I say that because what we've asked of these other agencies and we've come to an agreement with is when they receive a rent request, they send those calls to us first because I have the staff that are what I would consider very highly trained in this. And for the past few weeks, we've been getting staff shifted over to that in preparation for the increased call volume. And so, we started this clearinghouse on Wednesday, and I refer to it as a clearinghouse. But it's easier for our community members, easier for our employees, and easier for the other nonprofit agencies. And I'm pleased to report that so far, it's going really well. And I say our Health and Human Services staff deserves a huge shout-out on that because they're working remotely and it's working very well.
Barry, can you tell me the increase that on your workload because of the environment of what's happening around us and, you know, that kind of thing? So, people know that, and I don't think they do, that your increase is tenfold and that kind of thing, so.
So, I asked for, we get reports daily from staff on call volume and application volume. And I can tell you, eighty-five percent of the calls this week are regarding economic assistance, a majority of those being rental assistance. There was a fifty-three percent increase in call volume as compared to last week. So, as we know, and as I know you know, this will continue to increase as the weeks and months go on. A couple pieces to that too is we are focused on housing retention. The last thing we want to do is increase our homeless population. So, the more people we can keep remaining in their homes, the better off we are as a, a community. And so, you know, we're fortunate that landlords have been working with us because oftentimes landlords are not receiving an entire month's worth of rent because the, the funding just isn't available like that. And so, landlords have been really reasonable, and to this point, we're very lucky. We've received calls from other entities that have suggested that funding will be coming our direction here in the very near future. And so, we'll see what that looks like, and of course, I'll keep you updated on that. Another piece to this I wanted to point out is our Veteran Service Office remains extremely busy and we're, the, the veterans have actually commented that they appreciate the ability to do this from their homes versus coming into our office. So, that's a process that works well. My last piece to this is thanking you, the Commission, for moving forward with these different pieces on keeping our employees safe and allowing the opportunity for them to work remotely. This provides an opportunity for us to continue to serve the, the public because if they're healthy, they can continue to do this. And so, I wanted to thank you for that. And on behalf of the Health and Human Services staff, thank you for that, as well as our IT department, because they've been pivotal in making sure that this happens and keep our services running and not interrupted. So, with that said.
Questions?
Thank you, Barry.
Just, I'd like to commend you and your staff, Barry, because at these times, I think, like you said, I, I think it's going to increase tenfold. It already has for you and your departments. Our community, and I knew this before this happened, trusted you with Health and Human Services and the economics of people that need help. They are proving that by calling you, the nonprofits and the areas in our community that trust you, Barry, because you will know the answers and that you can help with the answers that they need or any other area in our community for people that are needing assistance at this time. So, Barry, your experience with this, Health and Human Services, there are humanitarian part of this COVID-19 and your employees is amazing. So, we appreciate you a lot, and I think our community is showing how much you mean to, what, what that assistance and what you do means to us. So, thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
So, next is the governor update. Yesterday, me and Holly sat in a meeting with the governor in about half of the South Dakota counties. I think it was a very positive meeting and a very uplifting meeting for us. So, the first information she gave us is there was four hundred and forty-seven cases. And Dustin, if I, if it's different, like you said, you, this was yesterday, there was two hundred and forty-seven active, hundred and forty-six recovered, and twenty-six hospitalized. Our first COVID case in South Dakota was March, or March tenth, and today is April tenth, so it's about a month. There's five thousand beds that we have and thirteen hundred ventilators well on their way, is what she had said. Let's see. She has ordered the entire state, of course, to do the CDC guidelines and not more than ten people in groups and social distancing. Lincoln County had a proclamation, sixty-five and older to stay at home, and also people that were vulnerable or have disabilities. So, that proclamation was done. I think Dustin could tell. I think it was like two days ago, if I'm correct, Dustin. And then Minnehaha had, was where that was, where they had that, and Lincoln County, if I'm correct, Holly, that had that stay-at-home for the vulnerable and the sixty-five and older. At this time, they have more cases than anyone in, in South Dakota. She also told us, which was very interesting, that she runs models, she does formulas, and she uses data to make her decisions. So, when people are saying that she thinks the whole, or people are saying she should just make everybody stay home. Well, when people ask her that, the bottom line is through models, formulas, and datas, or what's called the R-not factor. And that R, R-not factor also is an antibiotic resistance spread kind of factor that they look at. She's basing it on factual information. She's looking at how the virus spreads. She's looking at how fast it would spread, the demographics, the temperatures. The temperature makes a difference on this. So, I commended her, and I also said, when, when you do these models, formulas, or data, and, and the science of the virus, basically, could you relate that to our counties and our cities so we could back you up? So, when we're saying something, or we're not closing businesses down, or we're keeping businesses open, or we're doing different things, or we're having to implement different processes in order to follow basically your models, your formula and data, we like to be able to back that up with that information. And if you could send us, that's what I asked her, if you could send us some of that information, it's a lot easier to reiterate that to the public instead of guessing that we should close or that we should keep open, or we should use CDC guidelines. Because a lot of people that I'm listening to are saying, well, the governor, you know, what's wrong with her? She has issues. She won't do this. She won't do that. Well, she also worked for the federal government, so she has connections, and she is looking at data from Italy and different areas and different states. So, she's, when I, when I announced the other day, I said, someone asked me about what I thought about the governor and what we're doing through the Pennington County, basically of not calling it a emergency closure or to shut everything down. Basically, all I said is she's, she's stressed out just as much as any other leader. But I also believe that she's, she's not just guessing what she's doing. She's basing it on factual information, just like the rest of us. She's not going to go with the fear factor. She's going to go with information like the rest of us through these formulas, through this data. And it was nice to note. Bottom line is, is she going to send us more information? Yes, she is. She also said she would meet with our counties once a week. So, it makes the difference to do some communication with each other and make sure we're all on the same page in why and when and how we do things. So, I appreciated that. The other issue is the closing the borders. So, a lot of people have been seeing, a lot of people come through the borders and go, oh, these people are coming here. Can you close the borders? And that was Dewey County that asked that, and she said, no, because we have a lot of people that work across the borders. A lot of the reservations go across the borders to get their food. A lot of people work, like in Sioux Falls and different areas across the borders that wouldn't be able to come to their jobs. She said, at this time, she would not be closing the borders. Lincoln County also asked the same question I did on, on how do you get your information and the data, the model and the formula, and basing on what's called the R-not factor. Again, we appreciated her filling, filling us in with that information. She also said you could go to the website, which is covid-southdakota.gov, if you needed to learn more information and the things that she is doing. She also said, if we would have closed and put a shelter in place too early, what happens is you probably would be closed almost until October. She said, if we sheltered in place, we would have to be closed until October. Let virus go through the state in a manner we can control better, which makes sense. Because if you close everything, there's two parts to a virus again. There's the COVID-19 part, and then there's the economic humanitarian part. So, that made total sense. She wants to slow it down. State parks are still closed. Custer State, or Custer asked the question if, if they were going to close the parks, and she said, no. She said, again, follow CDC guidelines. The state park roads will be open. Letter. So, people were asking why she did not call it a public health emergency. She did not call it, actually, she took it to the legislators and they tried to address it with them, and they shut it down. They would not call it a public health emergency. She also said legislature did not support the action. Public health emergencies was a rejected bill for the Secretary of Health also to have more authority. The legislature also rejected that. Why you wouldn't call it a public health emergency, she said, is because some can, let's see, gives my Secretary of Health, could be, if people were positive, she said, and the Secretary of Health would also have and could have legal action against, with the person coming back and saying, you know, you infected people. Basically, there would be lawsuits. If you let, call it a public health emergency and have the Secretary of Health call it that, I guess is what, what I was trying to figure out, what they were saying on that. But property taxes, there will be no federal assistance on property taxes. And she also said there will be, and, and I've heard differently since then, it could change. There's not going to be any help with revenue loss for the government agencies at this, at this time. And that's what she said yesterday. Campbell County, again, was having overflow of tourists. People from Minnesota, they were fishing and coming to their, their areas. And again, she said, people that work over the borders cannot close the state. They asked if the National Guard could be at the polls for them because of the COVID-19 virus. And she said, at this time, the National Guard is, is dispersed in different areas, but not for polling, polling areas. Next is if anybody had any problems with polling or needed some help to call the Secretary of State for their elections, maybe she could give some better answers. They also talked about the heterite masks that they have, Campbell County, that they are producing a thousand masks a day, and that these are not N95 masks that are required. But you can look on the websites. A lot of the heterite communities are producing masks. A lot of the counties had a lot to say. It was pretty awesome. Let's see if I missed anything. Grocery stores. Someone said, if, if you could do something with the grocery store, she said, that's up to employers. They should be recommending CDC guidelines. She cannot go in and tell grocery stores, you know, you have to do anything and make your employees do anything but follow CDC guidelines. Essential and non-essential. That is something I wrote. And then, let's see, Holly, did I miss anything that we should talk? Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
I think what we're all looking for is that we know since March the tenth, these numbers have increased. And as Deb said yesterday, four forty-seven. I think what we're all looking for is where those numbers don't increase, where they stay the same and they start decreasing. So, we're looking for the top of that bell curve. And so, hopefully with all this data keeping, we will finally know when we've reached the peak on this by looking at that bell curve starting to do the drop.
So, she's thinking maybe May, June, sometime in that area for that peak, if?
That all depends on our behavior, on how we, how we treat this and how we look out for each other.
Right. She also, again, bases it on the formula and the datas from other areas, not just those big, huge areas. She's looking at across the United States. She has, she's been in touch with many of the other governors. She also has some federal areas where she got help because she was federal before us. So, again, this isn't just something that she's guessing at this point. She's actually, has an epidemiologist that's working with her. So, I think at this time, she is keeping track of all of our counties. She's keeping track of all of our cities. And there's got to be somewhat of a trust factor when she doesn't give counties this emergency clause to just shut their towns down because, again, that could delay, or when, when, what she said, if I'm correct, Holly, that if you put everybody in their homes too quick and then you let them out, you're going to change what the virus does, meaning you could peak later. You could have other areas in that peak because of shutting these towns or these cities down or these counties down too quick. So, Commissioner DeSanto.
Madam Chair. Dustin, correct me if I'm wrong, but you can go to covid19.gov and look up any state's COVID-19 cases, correct? So, I would recommend. So, I would recommend that people that are doubting what Governor Noem is doing, do that. Because, um, we're, South Dakota is experiencing one of the slowest spreads in the country. Um, one of, I'm not gonna say it's the slowest spread, but one of the slowest spreads in the country. It's got just over a 1% mortality rate in South Dakota. Um, that's rates per case, so, which is lower than, I think, almost any state in the country as far as their mortality rate per case. Um, that's people that are dying from COVID-19, um, when they get it. We've got a higher survivor rate, which is quite impressive. Um, we have to also keep in mind, and this is just an opinion, but it's an opinion formed by many other opinions that I'm reading and listening to, that keeping things open is gonna lessen the impact on our citizens' mental health. It's gonna reduce suicide, and it's gonna lessen the numbers of relapses in connection with people that are recovered addicts. You stick someone away in home, that's recovered addict, and stick them away at home and don't let them go to work, and don't let them do the things that they normally do in their life, and they're gonna return to those addictive behaviors that they had prior. Um, there's a much higher likelihood that that will happen. So, uh, in my opinion, Governor Noem is saving lives right now. She is, uh, she's doing a fantastic job. And I wish that, that our citizens would, um, support her and pray for her and, and, uh, believe in her. Cause as Deb said, she's not just basing this on opinion, she's researching. She's in connection with many other experts, um, on this subject. And she's doing a good job. So, and if you want proof of that, like I said, go to covid-nineteen.gov and any state website, and you'll see that our numbers are much better than just about anywhere in the nation. So, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Oskar.
Are these conversations with the governor, I assume they're recorded so that, uh, folks wanna listen? Uh, there's a way they can go on there and listen? I thought some of those were being recorded.
On the counties? No. They're just, we're just getting on a phone conference, basically, and listening and asking questions.
Commissioner that recorded it, I saw an email, it said, if you wanna listen to the conversation.
Okay.
I don't know that that was official.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair. First of all, I think, uh, the state, county, and cities, one of the biggest common goal they have is, has been to keep that curve low, and that was been the common goal from, from day one. So, I mean, the, all three entities have that, uh, goal and place. You know, one of the things I wanted to shout out, I think you guys made some good points on some with closures, not enclosures and so forth, but take a look at our community today compared to two weeks ago or a week ago. Some of the businesses that people were concerned about, well, how they were operating and doing things, walk and doing today. You know, they, they're, they're doing extensive cleaning, they're restricting the number of people there. And, and not only that, but the citizens are also doing that. More citizens are, are being more aware, more cautious of how they're contacting people and so forth. So, there is the change that is working in our community. And I think they're doing an outstanding job. We, we could sit back and argue about whether you should put emergency clause, and people wanna be told what to do and how to act, well, it, it's your personal responsibility, and we're seeing that. People are being more cautious. And I think when we see some of those businesses doing those things, you know, we should be recognizing how well they're doing and thinking, because without that service, uh, a lot of us would, would be able to do the work on our houses on our downtime and, and, and do the lawn care and that other stuff that we'd need to, to stay at home. So, ju- just worrying out and about, if you happen to see it, take notice of some of these changes. And, and be appreciative of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Bottom line is, is, again, we are leaders and we should support each other. And, um, at this time, sometimes I'm seeing, um, different areas where, um, people aren't supporting their governor, or they're not supporting their mayors, or they're not supporting their, their leaders. And again, um, I'll just tell you, most of us, including your emergency responders, your emergency management, um, they got this. Um, it's not always going to be, um, favorable one way or another, as we already figured out. But again, if you're basing it on models, formula and data, and not a fear factor, and you're looking at both sides of, of the issue, again, there's two sides of this, um, then you actually, um, know, in a certain extent, you're gonna guess on some of it, but most of the time, based on those models, based on that data, and I know Dustin knows all about this, he's been doing this a long time, that it's somewhat of a guesstimate, but most of the time, um, I believe that they know. They know, to a certain extent, um, what's gonna happen next. And the governor's doing this in phases, which you should. If you're seeing a county like Minnehaha and Lincoln that have, uh, a bigger population that are having issues, she's actually looking at how many seniors were in Minnehaha and Lincoln County. She's looking at people and demographics of those people, and she's doing that in Rapid City. She's doing that in Beagle, she's doing that in different areas. And I, a- and when you listen to her at first, cause you start listening to other people thinking, well, maybe the governor doesn't have this, because they're saying, why doesn't she do this? And then, why doesn't that mayor do this? Well, because if you're basing it on facts and information and something that's data, you're not letting a fear factor drive you, um, into one desperation or the other. Meaning, if, if you close too early, um, what's gonna happen? If you close too late, I don't think it's gonna be closed too late. Again, it's one in three that will have the virus, and one out of a hundred at this time of data, um, that will pass away from it. So, think about that data and then put that into models, formulas and, and, and science of a virus that you don't know. And, uh, again, um, I back the, I'll, I'll be up straight. I backed the governor up at the beginning because I had enough common sense to know if you have federal experience, if you have other governors that you're visiting with, and then you're basing it on facts and information, uh, you're doing it, you're, you're, you're damnedest to do the, the best job you can for South Dakota. And I'm, I'm, again, I'm with Mark, I'm very proud of her. That's a lot of stress to deal with. And just as a citizen, it's a lot of stress. So, you can imagine, if you're dealing with, what, uh, nine hundred thousand people that you have to take care of, um, that's a lot of stress. So, uh, I appreciate everything she's done for us, and I'm glad she'll be meeting us, with us once a week. And, uh, we'll see if we can record those, Holly, um, just so the commission, um, at different times, if they wanna listen to it, um, or other counties. So, thank you. And this afternoon also, we'll be meeting with Dustin, I think it's two o'clock, um, with other cities in Pennington County. So, we have resources that Penning, uh, the other areas in Pennington County for cities don't have. And Barry's been, again, one of those, our fire service, uh, um, volunteer fire department, different areas in Pennington County that they need help with. Um, we are reaching out to them and making sure they're covered as well. So, we have a great team here at Pennington County, our departments in different areas. Um, and I keep telling them, they got this. We're way ahead of this game, um, with these seventeen departments, so we appreciate them again. Gary, do you have anything that I missed, sir?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have, um, Cindy has an update for, um, elections.
Morning, Commissioner Cindy Mueller, Pennington County Auditor. Um, I just wanted to make sure that everybody realizes that early voting starts next week on Friday. Um, the Secretary of State's office is getting ready to send out letters and absentee ballot applications to all registered voters in the state to hopefully encourage people to vote by mail. That is going to increase the amount of ballots that we have to process by mail in our office. And on a normal primary, I do bring in, uh, at least two temps. So, I know you guys have put hiring freeze on, and I am asking for you to allow me to bring in my normal two temp people that I hire. And I also want you to know that I am down one full-time person that I don't plan on replacing this year.
So, um, we're having other areas where people have temporary or, um, seasonal. And I'll just be up straight. If they have, people have that in that budget, and they've cut that 10%, and it was already in the budget with the 10% cut, um, that's my opinion, if I'm correct, Board, then they can still move forward.
I think we have, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I'm gonna vote to approve those two temps.
Okay. I think at this point, if she has it in her budget, we do not have to vote on it. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions about the early voting?
No questions regarding exactly that, but as, um, as Deb pointed out, these are temporary that are for a specific reason, that's a short period of time. And I think that we can deal with that if it's in the budget and you've already cut your 10%. But, um, as far as full-time, keep on forever, um, that's where we're, we need to set our foot down.
Right. Um, the other thing is, Cindy, is there anything on the elections or how you're gonna let people in or anything like that, if people come to vote? Do you have any updates on any of that for?
We are gonna put out a press release that explains the process to vote by mail, to encourage everybody to do that. And along with the other offices in this building that are letting people in by appointment only. That is what we're gonna try to do for the in-person voting to begin with. We may have to adjust that. I'm hoping we don't have a lot of people that want to come into the building to vote. I hope that they are looking out for their safety as well as ours, and we'll vote by mail.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Please, sir.
Cindy, is there gonna be additional cost to be doing this by mail, I'm assuming?
Absolutely. Um, and with the city school election this year, I mean, my election costs are definitely going to be up. I'm gonna look for as many places to cut as I possibly can, but there are just things this year that are beyond my control.
Thank you. Next, we're on county employees. Positions necessary to support county functions, and then furlough options.
Morning again, Commissioners John Moore, Pennington County Human Resources. So, there's a few different pieces in the packet there for review today. One of those is the implementation of a furlough option, uh, with regard to our current employees. Pieces that aren't included in the memo and/or in the, the templates, if you will, for notices to employees are some of the backstory, if you will. Uh, the decision to furlough is much like the decision to separate or to hire. There's other additional pieces that go along with that. So, there would be information that would be shared with the departments that are going through that process, with the employees that may be subject to that process. So, again, understand that while this is very simple, just a, a one-page memo, um, there's a number of things that have to go into training and preparing people for the furlough process. The template letters that you see here are simply that. Uh, so, again, the one that speaks to reduced work hours would have to be specially done for each furlough situation and a reduced hours. This one, for example, shows a four-and-a-half-day work week. That may or may not be what departments decide that they wanted to do. Um, so, there has to be some customization to each one of these with each one of the employee situations by department. Uh, so, again, it's not a one-size-fits-all, and I, I think that was misunderstood initially, uh, that these are the letters. Well, then, that would mean that everybody that's going on a partial hours is working a four-and-a-half-day schedule. And we know that's not gonna be the case. So, we have some departments that are looking at reducing hours. We're having some that are looking to reduce overall, uh, expenses for the departments. So, again, with the ask of us to reduce expenses or our budgets by 10% for the year, this is one of those tools available for departments to consider. Um, the benefit to the county as well as to the employee, cause actually, furlough is a preferred option. Um, the, the word scares people, uh, when you hear furlough, it's like they're cutting. Um, the thing with the furlough that's, that's different from a regular separation is that those people are still employees of the county. Um, so, again, they still would be eligible for our healthcare plan. They'd still be eligible for South Dakota retirement system. All those pieces still exist for people that are on furlough. At the point you separate is when they lose access to those things. Uh, so, again, the separation discussion is one that we have anytime we're out processing somebody. Uh, but we'd have a similar conversation with the employees that may be placed on furlough. The, the templates that you see here as well, the reduced hours and/or the full reg- furl- furlough, excuse me, are actually done in a manner that this provides the detail to the Department of Labor that they require to actually help people apply for unemployment benefits. So, while you see these, and they're very brief and very concise, there's very specific data points that are included there to help in that application process. So, this is a template that worked on the requirements from the South Dakota Department of Labor, the federal government as well with regard to the CARES Act. Um, so, again, I can have explained a little bit the, the process, if you will. So, say, for example, a department decides that they want to reduce expenses or reduce a schedule. If you simply reduce hours for someone and don't give them a notice like this, it makes it more challenging for them to actually apply for unemployment benefits. By notifying them that there is a reduction, specifically outlining what the reduction is, that also tying it specifically to COVID-19, that opens up access to those unemployment benefits in a, in a much easier manner, as well as to the CARES Act. And the CARES Act, again, is a federal program where not only would the employee be eligible potentially for the, uh, state South Dakota unemployment benefits, the CARES Act actually provides up to an additional $600 hours a week all the way through the end of July for those people that are on, um, unemployment as well due to this type of an action. So, again, the, the furlough option is a tool. Um, it benefits the employee because it gives them easier access to unemployment. It also lets them know that while we're cutting hours or cutting the, the expenses right now, our intent is to bring you back, and, and that's the goal. So, it minimizes the, the impact, if you will, to the employee, knowing that their job is here. It does not promise that, I wanna point that out. There is a thing in here saying that we'll do our best to bring people back into the positions they were or into an equivalent position, uh, because you can't make that promise depending on what happens to our business model here at the county. Uh, but overall, the intent here to, to use the furlough is purely as an option to help the employees and to help the county, uh, when we look at what those reductions need to be. I'll stand for questions.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Oskar.
Thank, thank you, John. And I think the key part about this right here and right now is that this is considered as an option. Something, and you may, I think you put it good, is it's a tool in our toolbox to, for the department to take a look and, and see what's going on in their department and see the how, it's a tool that they can use one way or another, whether it's to actually help the department financially or to help an employee that, everybody at home. So, I, I guess that's what I wanna stress. At this point in time, this is paperwork and tools, then guidelines to go by, if it's chosen to go that way.
Yes, sir. So, it's not a recommendation of any employment action, uh, and I would really be hesitant to, to make that recommendation. It's completely to the department's discretion as to how they're going to make those, um, budget reductions work. This is just an option. And again, the, the benefit to the employees right now is because of the CARES Act and the, the fact that it provides an additional $600 for unemployment per week, um, there's the possibility that employees could be furloughed and actually make more while they're on furlough than they did while working full-time for us.
Yeah.
Uh, so, the break even is right around forty-nine, fifty thousand dollars, uh, in that area. If they're currently making about that much, they qualify for roughly four hundred and fourteen dollars a week in, um, unemployment benefits from the state, but an additional $600 potentially from the federal government. So, it would be, again, over a thousand dollars they could make, uh, on unemployment during the time that they're actually on furlough. Now, the, the negatives to that is that if they're on a full furlough, there's no additional deposits being made into their retirement account. Okay, so, that's one of the drawbacks. They also would have to find a way to make their payments of their benefit portion, because we would still continue to pay their benefits while they're on furlough. Um, so, the employer portion, if you will, but the employee would need to make arrangements with the auditor's office to actually pay their part of those premiums as well. Uh, but overall, it's, it's one of those situations that's beneficial for the employee as well as for the county.
Madam Chair, gonna follow up?
Sure.
I've had a great discussion on this in the last couple of weeks, on how this works. And, and not only from people that feel that it's unfair for the amount, and some would be making more and not working, then working and so forth. And I guess the way I look, how to, to try to explain it is, it's kind of a twofold thing. And without knowing the intent of how it went, is it's also an incentive that if, if keeping your society safe, it's safer to have them at home if you can do that. That's one way to explain it. That's one way to explain it, but it still creates some frustration in the community. And it also creates some, in the workforce, some difficulty of people wanting to, would rather be on this. But I just wanna stress that this is limited, limited time. And one of the things that I read in the county one is you're still gonna have to pay your part of the healthcare system or health benefits, which is good because we, I looked at the healthcare fund, we can't afford to pay, do both. I just looked at that yesterday, and yeah, it's not there to do it unlimited. So I think it's an option, but then, and be able to bring our employees back. And they gotta keep, remember, if any of your departments do this, you know, when things, we need you, you have to come back. And if you turn us down, you lose that other part.
Do you wanna explain that, John, a little more?
Yes, if I could, Madam Chair. So the return-to-work piece of the furlough is important to note. And there's an update, actually, to both of those notices that should be in the packet. Didn't get it finished until yesterday afternoon, so it may or may not be in the packets that you have. But it does come down to that piece. So once a person is furloughed, there's the opportunity for them to be recalled at some point during the furlough period that was originally put on here. The county does have the ability to recall that person as needed to come back to work, or even at the end of the structured furlough, we can say, okay, it's over, we expect you to be back to work. If the employee refuses in either one of those situations, not only would they lose their position with the county, they also would potentially lose the benefits from the state unemployment fund as well as the CARES Act. So again, this is a great tool and resource. Actually, it's strictly that. It's not a recommendation, it's just a tool. But there are some responsibilities on both sides from county as the employer, as well as for the employee, to make sure that there's clear understanding as to what this actually means. Again, this looks very simple, because it's just a couple of form letters and a single-page memo. The process is much more detailed, because you have to go through. So if this would be approved this week, okay, and if it's not, that's fine. But there has to be a training process for the departments and offices here in the county as well as to what the next steps would be if this is approved as an option. And then, once we would get to the furlough process with each individual employee, that would have to be a partnership, again, with those departments and with the HR offices to make sure that we can get everything lined out the way it should. They have all the resources and information, they know how to apply for unemployment, what benefits are still here, et cetera, et cetera, which is you would with any other out-processing type of process. So.
Madam Chair.
Just one thing, Lloyd, that you might wanna reiterate, it's this is for non-government agencies as well.
Yes.
Not just for...
I'm just saying, we just went through this Monday, so with some employees. So I mean, you're right, you need that information out there. We're getting questions in on, you know, is it, you have to do it once a week and follow up, and there's still a lot of questions going through it. That's why me and Deb had a talk earlier. We need to, you need to have this structure in place and the information.
Thank you. Commissioner DeSanto.
Madam Chair, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, and I pointed this out a couple of weeks ago also when we were discussing this, but, you know, a lot of people have a moral aversion to taking unemployment for some reason or another.
Sure.
And some people, we're getting a lot of calls, and a lot of people are concerned about the amount of tax dollars that we're spending supporting these employees. I just wanna let employees know that unemployment benefits is an insurance benefit. It's not a tax benefit. You paid for it, and your employer paid for it over the years. And therefore, what you're doing is simply, it's just like paying automobile insurance. You're in a position now that you need this insurance to pay out to you. And there's no, there shouldn't be any moral conflict to filing that claim. The $600 that's going on top of that, the COVID-19 CARES Act part of it, that is tax dollars. But your unemployment benefits are not tax dollars. Those are premium dollars that have been building up in a fund, or should be, for years, and should not, in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, cause a moral conflict with you to take advantage of that at this point in time.
And if I'm correct, John, the points for unemployment right now are not used against us because of COVID-19?
So with regard to the federal dollars, that's true. I'm looking for clarification with regard to state dollars. The way it looks at this point, there still may be some implications with regard to our experience rating, if you will, regarded to this. The state program operates differently, but I haven't received any data that specifies one way or the other on that. So my assumption at this point is that it would still potentially impact our experience rating, but they've not released any data on that. So for those that might not fully understand the unemployment process, it is truly an insurance program, so thank you for that, Commissioner. But the entities, whether they be government or private, pay what they call, it's a percentage based upon your experience rating, which is the number of claims you had and the dollars of those claims against your total payroll. So you pay a percentage on a monthly basis towards the unemployment fund, and that fund is where they try to have enough money to take care of claims. Now, as you might expect, different things happen. We look back at the big recession here back in 2008. Our unemployment fund in the state actually ran dry. They increased our rates as employers. I was a private employer at that point and had 20-some people working for me. So you kinda gasp when you see the bill for short term, but they reduced that pretty quickly as soon as the fund built back up. But it truly is an insurance program.
Did you have something on that?
No, from my understanding, it is the points wouldn't hold against us for that. But you're absolutely right. When you have more claims and you have more than funding that you have, everybody's gonna pay more. That makes more sense.
Yes, sir.
When you use that. But as far as, this is the understanding I got from other people that had their lawyers looking at it and stuff. It was with this state case, they weren't gonna hold the points against them because of its catastrophic event.
Oh, you can verify that, John, some, how through the state might exist.
That'd be helpful, but I do, that does make good point. We're gonna have the highest point of unemployment rate that we've had in many, many years, and it did drain dry one year.
So it'd be nice to find that out before we decide on the furlough options and see where, bottom line, where we're going with that. Gary, did you have information that you wanted to share on the furloughs? Can you hear me, Gary?
I do not.
Oh, okay. John, and then positions necessary to support county functions. We have a basis to, that John had pulled forward for us, and also the people that are telecommunicating also a paper on that as well. And that's for more discussion if we can do that work session on Friday. But John, go ahead and explain that a little bit.
You bet. So another one of the memos you had before you has to do with the Temporary Families First Coronavirus Response Act policy. We started looking at this about three weeks ago, just shortly after it was signed into law on the 18th of March. And I think we had our first version for review that following Monday or Tuesday. This is something that there's probably more urgency with regard to approving, because it actually would include the approval of the application process for our employees as well. Know that whether or not we have a form, the employees are eligible to participate in both the emergency paid sick leave and the emergency family leave. The fact that we don't have a form right now complicates that for them, but does not mean that they're not eligible for those. Those things went into effect as live law as of April 1st. So this is probably the only one that's severely time-sensitive in the packet, because without those, then it creates some challenges, if you will, as far as who's eligible to apply and what the process is for applying. So you have there the list of positions, and according to the wording now in the law, I went back. So you'll see that that's not exempt, it's not essential. They're actually listed in the law as being excluded positions. That list of excluded positions means that people in those positions aren't eligible to apply directly for these two benefits. Again, the emergency paid sick leave or the emergency family leave related to the COVID-19 pandemic.
So in bottom line, again, it's called emergency responder, healthcare provider. So they have a list in your packet as well that tells people. Do we have that list? I'm sorry, we don't. That will tell by department, by public works, or sheriff's department, basically, emergency responders, different areas. And I think it deserves some discussion of what this board decides that each department needs. John does have a list of people on that position necessary to support county functions, but I think we need to go through that and see if the board agrees or they believe that departments need more or less. I think that that should just be a list that we just, you know, decide today. I think it can be discussed a little bit more in how we're gonna run our positions. And again, with furloughs in different areas, I think once we see the budgets that we had put forth to have the departments with their 10% cut, that might change a little bit. So it is an urgency, John, but I also think it deserves more, a little bit more discussion on when we see what the departments are discussing on their budgets as well.
So Madam Chair, if I could, we, if nothing else, need to get the two forms put forward. So the essential or the excluded list, I understand. But the employees at this point need to know how to apply for these. And we don't have that, because we're waiting for this approval. So if we could look at those two pieces of this, I would ask for those to be approved so we can get the information out there for employees. We have some people that are already out of work this week, because they understand these are available.
Yeah, it's the same.
Gary, do you have any information on that that you'd like to share? I guess I'm not understanding the two forms that have to be done.
So Madam Chair, again, there has to be a process for our employees to apply. The law already exists, and we have people that are already out using this, but we don't have them on any documentation to show that they apply.
And how many people do you have?
I'm only sure of one at this point.
Okay, so at this point, I think if we just have one, we can't still do it on Friday?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
You know, these exempt, I looked through them. I think it's a good start of the list. I think with the, what John's trying to get done is there's employees out there who... Which covers over this is the daycares that got shut down. I know it talks about some of the COVID-19 quarantines and a lot of that other stuff, but it has a little bit more detail and stuff like that. Depending on the board, I think it, I think the excluded position list could be a working document
Yes.
in my building. I think we're gonna end up looking over these probably on a weekly basis, would be my guess, as departments move forward. So I, my thoughts is I would, I'd feel comfortable approving this today, knowing that that's a working document. It's not set in stone. As far as that excluded position list.
I'd hate to have people that, if this is the list for sure that we're doing and then we're gonna add to it, it's a little bit different than if you're going to decide that, you know, some are not needed or some are, and then you tell them they're exempt, and then they're non-exempt or essential, is a good word, or non-essential. You're, at this point, everybody on this board is okay with these people exactly being essential.
If I could, Madam Chair, again, as Commissioner LaCroy mentioned, it is a fluid list. It would be a dynamic list, and it may change based upon the needs of the county, the operations that we have, how we're functioning to support the first responders and/or the medical case providers. Those things will evolve as really the structure to what we're doing changes as well.
Well, I don't mind if it evolves, John. What I'm saying is, if it's gonna add more to it, that's different than we agree to everyone on this list being essential. So first, I'm gonna tell Joey's essential, and then if I decide next week that he's non-essential and he's applied, we just, it's discounted. I mean, what I'm saying is you want for sure if this is this list that you want, and if this board agrees.
Madam Chair. John, what you want today is just an approval on the form?
On the forms, if we could today, sir. Yeah, that would at least get us started with that process, so the employees have the understanding of what this is. We can communicate the law, we can communicate the process to apply, and then the review process within the departments. The list itself, that's less important to me, if you will, at this point. Again, we need to consider what that list includes. Those positions on the list are considered critical to maintain the infrastructure to help.
We can always modify who's on the list, who's not on the list, and that form could, it's a moving target. It could change as well, but you need a motion today so that we can at least get the process started.
At least get the process started for the application process for the employees.
I move to approve the form.
Second for discussion.
Okay, moved by Roskinex, second by DeSanto. So we're approving the request of emergency leave under the Family Medical Care Leave Act and President of the Families' Coronavirus Virus Act.
Just the forms is all we're approving.
Just to make sure I can bring copies, may I approach?
Yes.
So the motion on the floor was to approve the documentation, but not to, not, not the county excluded position list at this point in time.
That's exactly drawn?
Correct, just the form.
Just the forms.
The two forms.
Two forms.
Yeah, two forms, so get the process started.
Okay, so there's three papers to the form instead of two.
One is two pages, and then there's a single page. The other one is the notice that we had to post. So that was in the memo, that that was included in the packet, and I don't think that ever got sent.
Okay. I guess that's my frustration, is now you have a different paper that we've never seen, John.
That was sent out last week, ma'am.
Yeah, we have it.
Because things are ever so changing, and it was last week. The only two papers I have are these papers, John. So now, last week, you sent this, so it's a different form, and it's not in this paper.
No, the forms are the same, ma'am. The back page there in the packet.
You got a front and back on your...
Am I on the wrong paper? These are the only two I, is this the wrong paper I'm looking at?
These were included with the packet. I just wanted to make sure that you had them.
Family First Corona Act Leave Options, and then it has the two forms, and then it has the employees' rights. Okay, and I apologize, mine doesn't have what your guys' have, so that's why I was like, okay. Okay, sorry. Okay, sorry. Sorry, John, I didn't see the rest, and I'm like, okay. So you're, I thought you were giving me something different than you did before. Okay, sorry.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
John, could you clarify for us that when we approve the Family First Coronavirus Response Act Leave Options, if someone takes those options, they're not also eligible for unemployment?
That's correct. So while they're being paid by the county, they're not eligible. The only portion where they may be, okay, so there is one exception. If they're on the two-thirds pay for the extended leave to care for their child. So that's possibly they could apply for unemployment benefits at the point that they're on that leave. Now, it's if there's a reduction in their overall pay, they're eligible to always apply for the underemployment, or the piece, if you will, of unemployment benefits. So there is the potential. If they are on the first 80 hours of pay, at full pay, they cannot qualify for that. And you'll notice there's very distinct options with regard to who's eligible for each piece. So items one and three are for their personal health. Items four through six are for other conditions. And item five is specifically related to school closures and/or daycare closures.
Right.
So there's different pieces that they're eligible for, depending on which aspect of that law. So I think at one of our prior meetings, we had a chart that gave that information. This is the actual document based on that chart. If you fall into this category, then you qualify for this benefit.
Okay. Is there anyone, any of the department heads that have any questions on this? That wanna come up and say anything on this? Or missing on either essential or non-essential or... Or missing on either essential or non-essential, or any questions to the board or John that they don't understand on the, the request for emergency leave under the Family Medical Care Act, the forms or anything? Everybody understands them? All right. So we have a motion and a second. Gary, do you have any discussion?
No discussion.
Okay, for this? Okay, so maybe that's where I was missing. Okay, Gary, do you want to talk about the forms you got from Lisa? Is that for this particular area?
Please repeat that, Madam Chair.
Sorry, we're talking about approving the forms for the request for emergency leave under Family Medical Leave Act pursuant to Families' First Coronavirus Response Act. The forms you have to fill out, you said you had some other information from Lisa?
All the forms that I received from Lisa, I did attach to that whole document this morning.
So is it different, Gary? I mean, what's, what's the difference?
I, I don't, I'm not sure there is any difference. That may be a pretty standard form.
It's just a variation on the template, if I could, ma'am. So even the one that is in use in other counties now are based upon the one that we put together initially and sent out. So even within Meade County, for example, that one is based upon our template that they altered to a version that they preferred. So these appear to have the same content. They, they have to with regard to the law. There's certain aspects that people are applying for, qualify for, and there's certain data points that have to be provided to support those requests.
So they have employee requests for family and medical leave, and then they also have employee requests for emergency paid sick leave?
Hmm.
So that's both these forms together?
Yes, ma'am, same that we have.
You just combined them?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not following, I'm sorry.
So the sick leave and the emergency leave are the same?
It's two components of the same law. They're not the same form. There's two separate forms there.
Okay.
Again, in the packet that I gave you just a minute ago?
Okay.
Yeah, there's two separate forms there.
All right. Any other questions? Gary, you have any other questions?
I really don't. I think I heard John say that they basically are just two different versions of templates relative to this. If there's no real difference in them, I don't, I don't really have an opinion which one it should be.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Roskinex.
Aye.
Hattcock.
Aye.
All right, so next, we have suspension of performance pay.
So, as requested, here's some options with regard to reducing overall costs. Now, there's a number of different areas that would be available for cost reductions. These were two that were proposed based upon our current payroll and current pay processes for the rest of the year. So what this document speaks to is the fact that there's potential savings to the county of reducing or eliminating the performance step option with regard to employees moving forward from this date. It's roughly three-quarters of the employees, and again, I don't have the specific numbers on that. When we did a calculation on what that would mean to the county, it's a savings of about $354,000 by reducing or eliminating the extra step. Now, what does that actually mean? What it means is that the employees for the rest of the year would get their single annual step. It also would mean that all the employees then, over the course of this year, would have received roughly 3.75 or 3.7% of an increase, with the exception of the ones of the first two and a half or three months of the year that would have received that extra step, and then they'd be receiving about 4.9%. So about a percent and a quarter more for the ones in the first few months of the year, and about 3.7 or so for the ones for the remainder of the year. The performance piece is the, the primary option here being considered. Again, I can extrapolate and estimate those expenses, or the savings to be about $350,000 to the county. The reclassifications and promotions, as far as making those changes and any applicable steps that would go with that, I don't have any way to estimate what the savings may be to the county of that option. So again, it depends on the movement within departments, it depends on attrition, depends on a number of other factors, that would be just basically speculation. But know that that would, by not allowing the, the movements, if you will, would reduce the ability for the departments to promote or move to reclasses and give that person an increase when they move, plus additional seven steps or 15 steps on the pay scale. So again, the, the goal there is to, to minimize potential future financial expenses for this So that would be the, the two options to be considered. Again, they're simply cost-reducing measures as options. There, I think there's many other options that the departments have, again, available to them if we're looking just truly just to reduce costs. I think there's other things that could be considered.
Okay, thank you, John. So do we have a motion for the suspension of performance pay?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
John, this would just be temporary until we understand what the financial impact's going to be to the county, just as a, one of our tools in our toolbox in case we need the...
Yes, sir.
Type things up a little bit?
Yes, so the way it's drafted is actually that it would continue at the discretion of the commission. Again, you, as a body, have that, that right and power to determine any expenditures throughout the county. This would be in place through the end of this current pandemic and/or through the end of this year. The way I believe it's drafted, I didn't bring my glasses, so I'm doing my best attempt at trying to stretch here and read what it says. But I believe the way it's drafted, it says that it would continue through this, the end of December this year, but then we revert back to regular policies next year. But you reserve the right, then, to continue this or to do what you'd want moving forward.
Thank you.
I thought it was more like till further notice, meaning...
No.
We actually set it to December 31st.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I just want to address the part about those that have already maybe received a performance step for the first three months of this year. Not all of the employees that were up for steps, I, I don't believe, received that performance increase, that's up to a recommendation from that department head. I would, I would not favor going back and trying to remove that performance step from those that have received it, understanding that moving forward, that that performance step is not going to be offered for the near future. Thank you.
Yep.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Gary.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, yes, the document in front of us has, has a date on it, because I think we, when we were in discussions, we were talking about it would be reviewed at the end of the year and then the year's 31st or close to the end. My only question is, is, you know, as things change, John, and the commission, we don't know what could happen. We, I mean, we really don't. We're preparing for the worst. And some things could change drastically in any given department, and we may have to have one employee who's end up doing three jobs. I don't know. I've, I've seen it several different ways when, when you get into reduction of workforce, how things change. And if that becomes the case, and we're saying no more reclassifications and promotions, you know, there may be a time when we have to, and that's going to be something that's going to be brought to the commission. It's not a, an open decision, so...
Right.
If, if something happens in a department and they feel that they need to do this because it's the only right thing to do, they're going to bring it to us, correct?
Yes, sir. So that, those decisions, anything with regard to pay or process, always will default to the commission for that decision.
Okay.
I, I would ask that that actually be openly offered. So the way this is drafted, it just says we're stopping this process. But I, I think having that understanding that if there's a need, again, promotions and training, I think one of our departments spoke about that this last week, or even earlier this week, about they have a continual need to train and advance and move people through in order to develop their skills so they're better able to perform the services that they need to for the county. I think in those situations, we would want to invite them in to visit with the commission to talk about those specific people.
Yeah.
The performance pay, let's vote on that first. Is there a motion to that effect?
I would make that motion.
Motion by DeSanto. There's a second?
Second.
Second by Roskinex. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Madam Chair, could I have the motion repeated?
Effective April 10th, 2020, I move to suspend all performance step pay increases for the remainder of 2020, with a board review to be completed prior to 2021 to evaluate the need to continue the suspension into 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call. DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Roskinex.
Aye.
Hattcock. Aye. Motion carries. Okay, suspension of reclassification and promotions. Do we have a motion? What is the motion that we have in the paper?
Madam Chair, I believe we need to add to this as per John's recommendation.
Do amendment.
Well, we haven't made the motion yet, so we don't need to amend it.
Okay.
But we do need the, the language that I would need to put on there that would permit us...
I think it would be something as simple as the board invites departments to, to discuss their needs in executive session, if cases exist that would require exceptions.
How about upon board approval, exceptions may be made?
There you go. That's much better.
Okay, so read the full thing once, once you get done writing, Commissioner DeSanto for us. What needs to be considered when you do that is you've got a 10% cut, so are you going to have people added to their budget to do promotions and...
No.
Do you see what I'm saying? So they'll have to keep it within their budget if they're doing these promotions or reclassifications.
Correct, and that's something we'll consider when they bring it before the board.
Yes, just so that people know that, that, you know, you can't get a 10% cut and then do reclassifications in the, in the next year and then pull your budget back up. I mean, hopefully, that's common sense, but just saying it. Okay, motion?
So I would move to approve effective April 10th, 2020, I move to suspend, suspend all reclassifications and promotions for the remainder of 2020, with a board review to be completed prior to 2021 to evaluate the need to continue the suspension into 2021. Upon board approval, exceptions may be made.
So motion made by DeSanto, do we have a second, please? Second by LaCroy. Any more discussion? Commissioner Drews, you have any discussion?
No, it's a good motion, I think.
Okay, let's do roll call then, please. DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Roskinex.
Aye.
Hattcock.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Yes, I think that's it. Thank you.
Next, we'll have county operations update. Ms. Holly, I know we have some changes up front when we come into the county facility, so anything else besides that that we have, Ms. Holly?
No, not that I am aware of. Operations continue to run smoothly, all the services are still being provided. There is discussion of some changes to the administration desk up front. The appointments are not coming in quite like we anticipated, so we are discussing removing the clerk that is up there that will be checking people in, and sheriff's office feels that the deputy can do the screening and take care of the individuals. The only adjustment that we'll probably make to that is next week when we start equalization hearings, appointments are every 15 minutes, so we will have a significantly larger number of people coming in that will probably be a lot for one person to check in. So at this point, I believe we're moving forward with removing the admin person from upstairs, and the deputy will handle the majority of it.
And he can do the screening and things like that?
Correct, he continues to do the screenings.
And how about elections? Did we have anything different, or are we just...
I'm not aware of any, but that's Cindy's.
Okay, just to make sure, if she needs someone up front, that we, we have that covered as well.
Yeah, she stated earlier that she was going to try it by appointment to start.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll make the adjustments as needed.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
A question for Holly. I, I missed the part where you said that you were talking about removing something. I didn't hear what that was.
Gary, we're talking about removing the clerk that we have that sits up front at the desk at the admin building. There just isn't enough people coming in from outside to keep them busy. So we think the deputy can do it all.
Thank you for keeping track of that, Ms. Holly. Next is the 2020, 2010% budget reduction, including non-mandated programs. Do we have discussion? Do we have a motion? We had asked last week if the department heads could do a 10% reduction, and we did not make a motion, if I'm correct, to that effect. So we do need that motion, and then on Friday, discussion on some of that with a work session and figure out where we're going from there.
I would make a motion to request each department to reduce their budget by 10%.
So it'd be a 2020, 10% budget reduction, including mandated programs.
That'd be my motion.
Sir.
Second.
Motion by DeSanto, second by Roskinex, discussion?
Can you repeat the motion again, please?
It'd be the 2020, 10% budget reductions, including non-mandated, can't even say it, non-mandated programs. Did you hear that, Gary?
I heard that, I didn't hear a percentage put on it.
10%.
10%?
Gary, did you hear 10%?
Discussion.
I'm sorry, Gary, what'd you say?
If you have a motion and a second, I'd like to have a little discussion.
Go ahead, sir.
I just recognize that 10% may be difficult for every department. Some may be able to exceed that, some may be not be able to reach it, so I would like to see a little bit of leeway provided there. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I agree with Mr. Drews. You know, you know, I understand the straight cut across 10%, but I also, I'm, I'm under the understanding we're going to have some more discussions throughout this week and be able to clarify some of that, because some, some of this reduction, if we cut, we could lose revenue, and I think we've got to kind of weigh out which, which parts are. I don't, I'm not sure I'm willing to listen, but I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, Gary, and I think that's why we need to look at and have that work session to figure out where we're going, because some, like you said, some have revenues, some do not, but bottom line is, with Cindy, if it has to be 10%, it has to be 10%. So I'm willing to look at that as well, but depending on departments, like some only have two in their departments, and I understand some of that, too. So again, I think when we do this, we are making the motion, but we're going to have to go back again and look at some of those areas that have revenues and stuff. But again, 10% might just be the beginning of this as well, so we need to keep that in mind as well.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Get Gary's first. I think that what we should focus on is if, if a, if a, if a department can't cut 10% because of specifically loss of revenue or something having to do with the cost to their department because of COVID-19 is where our exceptions should be made, is my opinion.
Right, and I guess when we see those budgets, we'll be able to tell that. So we'll have that discussion then. Commissioner Drews?
I would like to just offer an amendment to that motion of simply adding some words in there. in there that each department strive for 10%.
There you go.
So, thank you, Gary, but I'll say again, so when we strive for 10%, and then we need maybe another five later, are we going to say we're going to strive for 5% the next time?
I understand that we may need to do something further down the road, but to try to say to each department right now that they have to eliminate 10%, I think we have to do it on an individual basis to a certain extent. I just don't think everybody can reach that.
See, and I do appreciate that. I guess for me, again, I wouldn't put the amendment in there, I'd look at the budgets first, and then if we have to come back and make some discussion, meaning have some discussion on certain areas of revenue and exceptions, that's when we should do that, based on when Cindy brings us those numbers that these reductions already have. That's my opinion. Board? I'm sorry.
Madam Chair.
Just a minute, Mr. Richard. Commissioner.
I just think back when we'd done some reductions earlier, and I like the wording that Gary's using for the simple fact that then there's some issues, you know, they're going to strive to do it, and then we're going to ask them why they can't, and then we can justify whether that is or not. If we want to, I've seen in the past where we've made them make those cuts, and then there were some of the consequences that followed with it that, you know, we understood. But I think the striving, I think every department is made up different, and we do the best that we can, and if it's, once we review that, if it still doesn't seem good enough, and we looked at what they might have to do more, that would be a decision we have to make at that time. So. That's just my thoughts.
Mr. Richard.
Thank you, Eric Witcher, Director of Public Defender's Office. I would just ask for a clarification, are you asking us to submit a budget reflecting the 10% as opposed to cutting our budgets by 10% and doing the actions necessary to make that happen effective essentially immediately? I can advise the commission that that would require me to either furlough necessary staff or terminate staff effective immediately, if that was what the board is asking. Is it, was that clear?
Right. So are we striving, or are we just telling them 10%? Because again, I would see what those 10% cuts were, and then look at them, instead of putting striving to do that right now, because I guess I want to see where they have to cut, if it's 10%, and then we decide, are we saying we should strive for that? And then you're putting it out there that Joe might strive for that, but he believes essentially that this is good, and Janet might strive for that, but she essentially does this. What I'm saying is make the motion, have them look where the cuts would be, and see if it's essential and non-essential to their operations.
Madam Chair. Just clarification on my point, this is not, for this motion, for two days to give the directive to have them do the 10%, which they probably knew about a week ago, this may happen, right? Am I correct? This is not, they bring it to us, what was at 10%, what that would, how that's going to affect you. And at that point in time, when we see all that, then we make a decision where, and it could go by department very well, could be. I mean, we're going to have to look through this for the commission. I mean, but for this motion, that's what you're asking, is to give the directive a 10%?
Right.
They come back to us, and we see what those cuts could be, and at that point in time, we can make the decision whether we could defer from that or do something else. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Does that help?
They have, what's happening is, is we told them Monday, so by next week, which gives them two weeks to figure out if they can make that budget, and if they can't make that budget, what they'd have to do to make that budget, then you can look and say, okay, based on this, they're essential operations in order to make cuts or whatever, is going to reduce their revenues, that's not going to work. Then you've got to figure out the numbers, based on what Cindy's saying, that we're going to need in order to have these operations and make some serious decisions at that point of where that money comes from. So once you see budgets, once you see where revenues are coming from, then you would decide on that 10% cut, basically, because Eric's saying I can't run an operation, or I have to let people go, there might be revenues or different areas that we're missing. So first, let them decide, again, and as Gary says, strive for the 10%. But if you say strive, maybe when we see Eric saying he has to cut four people in order to get his 10%, that might be different. But for me, I need, this is me personally, I need to know where those cuts were going to be, or why they can't make it. And they should have those in by next Thursday, Holly?
Yes.
And then the working session would be on Friday, if we agreed at 9:00 AM to look at all these situations and then go, okay, what are we basing this on, and more discussion? So.
Madam Chair.
Make sense? Commissioner DeSanto?
I believe that that can be accomplished with or without the amendment, so I don't have anything against the amendment, it can be accomplished either way. So we have an amendment and a second to that amendment. Lloyd, you seconded it, correct?
Sure.
You did? I thought you did. For discussion, but.
Who made the motion, Ms. Gary?
Gary made the motion, the amended motion.
Yeah. Okay. Gary made the motion?
He made the amendment, yeah.
He made the amendment to my motion.
Has it been seconded?
To add strive.
Okay, so Gary, tell me.
There was a first by DeSanto, a second by Ross Connect for the original one, and then Gary made the friendly amendment.
And you accepted the?
I accept the amendment.
Okay, so the motion was made by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect for the friendly amendment. All right.
For the motion, the original motion.
With the amendment. Yes. And you're both in agreement, right?
So the amendment is to strive?
Correct.
Okay.
Because my reasoning behind that is that we can accomplish the same thing next Friday, regardless of what that motion says.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
We're clear on this, right? Okay.
Okay.
You know, just food for thought. You know, when me and Ross Connect were in a meeting, I remember I was asking one of the highway people, give me two options, you know? So I would tell these departments that 10%, you know what that's going to affect. Eric, you said I'm going to have to eliminate these people, but what could be done is a second option. I mean, just a food for thought. I mean, that 10% could be detrimental, maybe not. That's for us to decide, but I would have a backup plan if I was you guys.
Okay. Sometimes if you wish wash on things and you do stuff, it's confusing to me, let alone, I don't know if it is to the department heads, but it is to me, too. So I would like a directive, if I was a department head, at 10%, I would have to see where my cuts are, and then come back, and then, once we discuss it again. But if you want strive in there, that's fine. Sir?
Madam Chair, Mark Vargo, county state's attorney. I was just going to offer perhaps a flip side of that. I understand the point of direction, and I think when we're told to strive for 10%, that that gives us pretty clear direction. I think the difficulty being, when you said an absolute, give us a 10% budget, that locks numbers into people psychologically, and until we've seen the data, the chair spoke fairly eloquently this morning and passionately about not fear mongering and really waiting to see what the data told us. On behalf of the governor, I'm urging this commission to do the same thing as it relates to our own budget. So I would appreciate the friendly amendment that Commissioner Drews offered, and we will certainly submit everything we can. I think your department has you taking this very seriously. You can look at some of the things they've already done without mandates from the commission. And so, like I said, I would appreciate it as amended.
Commissioner DeSanto?
Madam Chair.
Hold on, just a second, Gary.
Speaking to what Mark just said, one unfortunate part of this whole situation is, Mark, we're not going to know probably until October, or maybe even November, what this is going to look like in our budget, in the whole county budget, as far as revenues are concerned. I don't think that the backlash of this whole thing is really going to show up until that point in time. So that's why it makes it difficult for us to give you a specific number, but I appreciate what you just said, that, you know, giving them some leeway, let the departments look at what they're doing and see what we can do, and they are taking it seriously. We've made it pretty clear that we want 10%.
Commissioner Drews?
I want to go back to, I didn't actually hear everything that Mark Vargo had to say, but I'll go back to and use Eric as the example for what he said. And I think that what we're looking for, and as I look at the various departments and where they have to cut, a lot of them do get to the point of where they're probably cutting personnel or reducing personnel in order to get to that 10%. So for instance, like with the public defender's office, I think if Eric can bring to us, and this is my opinion, if Eric can bring to us showing what he can cut, and maybe that's only 6% or 7%, and then show us that if he was going to go to 10%, what he was going to have to do to do that, if that's reducing personnel or whatever, so that we have that information in front of us and can actually make a determination at that point in time, what is absolutely necessary to do. Understanding that a week later or two weeks later, this whole situation may change again, and we may be coming back to departments saying, we don't have the revenue coming in, we're going to have to make more cuts. So that's just my opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. I guess that's where I was going. Have them do the 10%, and they would have showed anyway where those cuts would be, and then we could decide the same way. And that's exactly what I said, actually, was you're going to have to do 10% cuts. Okay, let's say Holly. Holly has to do 10% cuts, this is what she'd have, this is all she can cut, but if she does 10% cuts, this is where she's getting it from. And she's going to have to say, well, I have to cut this. That's exactly what I was saying, is have them do the 10% cuts, and it would show in their budgets, because, you know, when you're saying you're doing a 10% cut, you're going to show already where you have to cut. Am I correct? Out of your overall budget, whether it's operations or anything else. Just looking at Holly's, she has a little bit of everything. So bottom line is, I guess that's what the motion was in the first place, but.
I guess I misunderstood that.
And maybe everybody else did, but that's where I was going, is bottom line, you're going to change, and we're still at the same place. If you have everybody do the 10% cuts, we're going to see revenues, that's what I was saying. We're areas where we're going to be guestimating some revenues, and Sheriff Department, he's not going to be guestimating. He's going to know if he has 10 more federal prisoners, you know his revenues coming in no matter what. So that's what I was trying to say, is you'll see the 10% cut, and what's the goal we're going for? What's the amount, if it's $5 million, if that's where we're going, then how are we getting there? And if he's just added a million more in revenue, then that's a little bit different than us reducing, saying we've got to reduce 5 million, but we know the sheriff is bringing in an extra million. Does that make sense? So when you do the 10% cuts, you're taking all of that in. So you can add strive, but it's the same, it's the same motion.
Madam Chair. I'd call for question.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I think.
You have to vote on calling the question.
Okay. Question's been called.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Mark, or Mr. Witcher, you can speak, and then we'll go ahead and move forward.
And, you know, I think I know exactly what you're asking for, it's sort of what I did. I can tell you it's, you know, I can save $180,000, which is 6.4% of my budget, and then it gets, you know, substantially more painful every percentage, and so I'll provide all of that information to the commission, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll go ahead and do roll call. Thank you, Mark. I got your point.
Are we doing the motion with the word striving?
Yes. Okay. Yes. So DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
No.
Motion carries with one no. Okay, next is 2020 revenues. What are we talking about on that, Holly?
I think it's just to remind the departments to estimate those as well, if they foresee any losses, and submit that with their budget reductions next week.
Okay. So basically what we just talked about.
And my intent is I'll send an email out to the department heads this afternoon with some clarification on exactly what we want submitted, and to include the detail in the revenue section as well, so.
Okay, so what did we put on there when you sent the first memo, Holly? Was it, I remember putting grant FTEs and some other stuff in there?
Yes.
Okay. So the board knows? Any other details that I'm missing that you?
Just budgets, revenues, employees, grants supported.
Temporary, anything like that, seasonal for employees? Okay. Thank you, Holly. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
We have future Board of Commissioners special meeting dates for us, sir?
Oh.
So on Friday, we'd like a work session at 9:00, and then the Board of Commissioner meeting at 1:00, if that works for our board. Anybody opposed to that? Gary, did you hear that?
I did. Thank you.
Okay. So do we have to make a motion? Okay. Do we have a motion for a 9:00 work session and a 1:00 Board of Commissioner meeting next Friday, the 17th?
That'd be my motion.
Motion by DeSanto?
Second.
Second by Drews, or Drews. Ross Connect? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Oh, wait a minute, we got a roll call.
DeSanto? I was looking at this. Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.